Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us for the May 16th session of the Bellingham City Council. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Couple special announcements. On Monday, June 6th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, the city council will host a public hearing on the draft 2017-2022 Transportation Improvement Program. We call the TIP. On Monday, June 6th, we will also at 7:00 PM in our council chambers, host a public hearing on the draft 2016 Comprehensive Plan. And if we could, if you could join me, and we're going to have Mary Kay Robinson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Teri Borneman.
Here.
Okay, so no special hearings or meetings tonight, so we're going to go right into 15-minute public comment period. And if I can remind you, you have three minutes, and this is a nice, safe environment, so no cheering or jeering for anyone, and everyone has an opportunity to speak in a safe environment. And our first person is going to be Rob Janicki, then Joseph McDonald and Annie Mackey.
My name is Rob Janicki, and I am the founder of the RJ Group, a local development company. The RJ Group has its mission to create innovative living spaces that respond to the needs of our community. We are committed to innovation rooted in community values. One of those values is affordable housing. Mary Lynn Voel recently defined affordable housing as housing that people with living wage jobs can afford. Currently, my company is building and selling homes in Bellingham, starting at around 260,000. The Janicki family is often identified as one of the founding families of Skagit County. We have made it a priority to continually invest back into our communities through volunteer time, stewardship, and performing nonprofit services. We've worked with Skagit Housing Authority, volunteers through Rotary, currently working with the Wacom Bike Coalition on Galbeth Mountain to create a working relationship between mountain biking and forestry. Community stewardship has always been a foundational element in my life, and the RJ Group's role in community development is no exception. The RJ Group was founded to translate these values to provide a diverse mix of housing in a growing community. Our company was the first to utilize the infill toolkit as an alternative means of development at both our Peabody Town Homes and Hellick Street Projects. Our other projects include Chelsea Lofts, a mixed-use building in downtown Bellingham, and single-family homes in the Cordotta neighborhood. We currently have a mix of multifamily and single-family projects in the city that will become over 1,000 living units. We are thankful for the hard work and diligence of the City of Bellingham staff during our entitlement process of these developments. Unfortunately, the process itself creates financial barriers to developers like me that want to develop affordable neighborhoods. I'm not here tonight to list the many barriers that my team faces during the permitting process. I want to keep the dialogue going between the city council, City of Bellingham staff, and the development community in order to achieve a more cohesive development process and create smart and affordable housing options. It is my goal to be an advocate and liaison for creating a better environment for affordability and to act as a resource as someone who interacts with city development on a daily basis. My team and I are available to meet with any of you to discuss this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Joseph McDonald.
My name is Joseph McDonald, and you know I have a speech impediment. The City of Bellingham is a holy warden with the false doctrines of Christianity. In John 3:1335, Jesus said, "This is how everyone will know that you are my disciples, when they see the love you have for each other." The Bible basest priests in this city who have learned as a waste of breath trying to talk with, clearly demonstrate with their rude behavior that they are not disciples of Christ. I fail to see the meanness in them. They are impostors with their metaphorical cross burning, their terroristic rudder. I can't blame people for their shared atheism, also with their dark message of hate, which claims that everyone except us is going to burn in hell forever. I think that message is a bunch of rubbish. I think every Christian has to ask themselves these two questions. Number one, is Jesus Christ just as sick and as dexter as Adolf Hitler? And A, number one, are the fires of Sodom and Gomorrah still burning today? If you see these priests on each street corner while observing their behavior, it would be hilarious if it wasn't so pathetic that they are not disciples of Christ and excellent Antichrists. Religious fanatics are bad news. Jesus Christ's kingdom will bring these swine, wicked, and hateful religious fanatics. Thank you, and God bless America while still here.
Thank you, Joseph. Ann, I see it's you, so I know it's Ann, not Annie.
Well, Annie is a very affectionate term, so I took it that way. Thank you. Only my brothers couldn't really call me that. Good evening. My name is Ann Mackey, and I live in the York neighborhood. I attended the council's afternoon meeting today, during which we heard a brief presentation from planning staff about the comprehensive plan update. Thank you, Councilwoman Barker, for encouraging the council to review the materials of the planning commission meetings that have occurred this year, especially the April 7th public hearing, at which several speakers opposed to the staff's recommendations to extend detached ADUs into single-family zones was discussed. ADUs have been a hot topic for years, and it continues to symbolize what neighborhood folks care most about, and that's the protection of single-family character in older neighborhoods. Tonight, I am submitting a letter signed by 15 people from seven different neighborhoods. We support a comprehensive plan that's consistent with the Growth Management Act, which states, quote, "Ensure the vitality and character of established residential neighborhoods." The GMA requires comprehensive plans to provide, quote, "an inventory of existing housing units." Therefore, we call for the city to produce an inventory of existing ADUs before it takes one more step toward rewriting an ADU ordinance. The current housing codes related to ADUs need to be enforced. ADUs must be owner-occupied in single-family zones. These are recommendations from the planning commission that we agree with. Our letter goes on to address issues in the transportation chapter, specifically the transportation corridor proposal, by which a corridor, one quarter of a mile wide, north and south, or east and west, of a goal line could then be rezoned and redeveloped to multifamily and possibly commercial uses. And we believe, again, that this is contrary to the Growth Management Act directives, which say, "Encourage preservation of existing housing stock." Our letter addresses the issue of creating incentives for developers. We say services need to be paid for when development occurs. They should not have the right to not pay for transportation, schools, and park impact fees. Really, who picks up the tab? And there's still a tab, right? And lastly, the comp plan includes items from the chat report, which is a 58-page, nine-year-old report generated by a county-wide task force on housing affordability. There may be some good items in there, but I think that there are items in there that are outdated and have since been overruled by the city council. Thank you, and I'll pass out our letter.
Thank you, Ann. Tim Paxton, and then Eric Scott and Mary Kay Robinson.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the New Options High School that's going in on Franklin Street near Bellingham High School. I've been doing a little research on it. It's been the most stealth project I've ever looked at in Bellingham. They've had the bid opening, it was on May 12th. The hearing, in front of the hearing examiners, not until Wednesday, the 18th here, so it's pretty much on the fast track here to get it up and running and open here. Unfortunately, they didn't notify the neighborhood correctly. Their public notification process was pretty flawed, and the address list was provided by the city's own planning department here. So there's a little bit of participation by this building here, but they also forgot to notify the MNC representative for Sunnyland. The Sunnyland president wasn't notified. So the entire south end of the project wasn't notified down near the 1,800 and 1,700 block of Ellis Street. Anyways, the project continues. It's still going to be on top of a 10-inch high-pressure gas pipeline for the students. And we've been doing some research with some of the bloggers in town here, including Mr. Survey and Elizabeth Britt. And one of the things we discovered recently was that the combination of a utility corridor that has a high-pressure gas pipeline, which is a 10-inch and a 4-inch one there, and on top of that, a high-voltage power corridor. The pipeline is normally pretty well protected by its coating, and it's got a cathode protection out to keep it from rusting away too fast. Unfortunately, the newest research shows that the overhead power lines generate a current in the ground that cancels out the cathode protection there, so it accelerates the rusting and corrosion of these pipelines here. So the rate of corrosion is 1 millimeter per year, and at 20-year lifespan of this pipe that's been underground and pretty much underwater the whole time, you can bet that there's probably a lot of corrosion going on there despite the optimistic, you know, views of the engineers and the owners of the pipeline here. So anyways, the pipeline's still there, the gas pressure is still high, and Options High School is going on top of it there, so the students get a chance to get a real exciting career there. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Eric Scott.
Hello, Eric Scott, 2933 McLeod Road, Birchwood neighborhood. This is on proposed changes to the ADU ordinance, the comprehensive plan. Detached ADUs and infill in single-family zones neighborhoods, in effect, are another hit to the working class, as it's our neighborhoods that are targeted, those without covenants against. We've learned that neighbors fought this upzone, in effect, 30 years ago, and now these same neighborhoods are threatened again with a upzone to allow detached ADUs. A few years' time has not lowered the normal standard of living for a family, so we still do not want upzoning. Detached ADUs can greatly detract from a neighbor's home, devalue their hard work and responsible living. A mini rental overlooking your once-private backyard with the noise and cars parks and possibly disrespectful neighbors or renters can lower your home's livability. Bellingham has many examples of this already. Some Seattle neighborhoods are even worse. The transportation-oriented development, so the LU-19 land use and transportation suggestion, I think by the planning department, would create a quarter-mile-wide, quarter, oh, half-mile-wide, quarter-mile on each side along some arterials that have transportation, and allow them to be upzoned. Now, that would be pretty unfair to the people that move there, a lot of them that move there specifically to be near public transportation. And now they'll, in fact, be punished for their responsible choice of housing, or choice of neighborhood. Illegal ADUs and true population density metrics are needed before any change to the ordinance should be made. We don't know how many there are out there. We've heard story after story of many ADUs that are illegal, detached even, and unknown number of occupants. We need enforcement of the existing ADUs. It needs to be owner-occupied and attached. This has been flagrantly ignored, like I've said before. Detached ADUs do not have anything to do with affordable housing. ADUs and infill are promoted by people looking for a fast return on their investment, and so they will charge a maximum rent that the market will bear. Developer incentives shift burden, shift the burden on the homeowners. We have been paying for things like schools and parks, and will continue to pay for that. And now developers are asking for incentives to build increasing density and not have those units pay their fair share, and that's unfair. I've got some comments to hand out.
Mary Kay Robinson.
Good evening, Mary Kay Robinson. I'm the current president of the Wacom County Association of Realtors. Just in reviewing, we're quickly coming to the end of the comprehensive plan review, and there's two factors to me that are still very troubling. One is the lack of housing resulting in extremely low vacancy rates, the spike in rent payments and housing prices, and then, two, the lack of developable residential land in the current UGA boundaries. And you can see that in the headlines in the BBJ, lack of Inside the Housing shortage, the Bellingham Herald, larger chunk of paycheck. This has been over the headlines. Both of these factors make it impossible to comply with one critical aspect of the Growth Management Act, and that is to provide a variety of housing that is affordable to all economic segments. That does not mean a couple of subsidized projects for low-income or homeless, and then pat ourselves on the back and call it good. All economic segments mean folks who are daycare providers, social workers, mechanics, retail clerks, restaurant employees, receptionists, et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on. Recently, in the Wall Street Journal, in the article from last month, there was an article about the great divide between affordable and expensive U.S. cities. The article cited several examples. The developed residential land area in Lanah, by example, grew 208% from 1980 to 2010, and real home values grew 14%. Not bad. Contrast that with the San Francisco-San Jose area, where land grew by 30%, just 30%. Home values there grew by 188%. Another part of the country. The developed residential area in Raleigh, North Carolina, grew by 219% during that same 30-year period, while home values grew 27%. Now, in our backyard, Seattle, developed residential land grew just 69%, while home values grew 119%. The author's conclusion was, "If you do not let cities grow, you're going to get prices going upward and see the middle class being pushed out. Supply and demand matter. The only equalizer in that equation is price." In the last five years, median home prices in Bellingham have risen 22%. There isn't enough wage pressure right now for the middle class to keep up with those kinds of housing price increases. So if we want our social workers and mechanics, beginning teachers and police officers, store clerks, and restaurant personnel to commute to Bellingham for their jobs because they couldn't find a home that they could afford, then we should just keep doing what we're doing, keep doing what we've already done, and we'll continue to get what we've already gotten. Rapidly increased housing costs in the city that increasingly will only have the extreme ends of the economic spectrum as residents, the lucky low-income few who qualify for a home or housing, and the high-income earners to whom price doesn't matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Kay. Lynn, is it Barton? Okay.
I have a PowerPoint I'd like to set up.
Let's, Elizabeth will, yeah.
Why do you do that? I've got some photos. These photos are going to be shown here for BTV and for the.
Lynn, is a PowerPoint necessary? We don't actually usually have that during public comment. Do you have a picture you could maybe put up there? Could we do that? Okay.
Put it on the projector.
On the projector? That would be great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much for your help. I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Lynn Barton. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. And I approach the city council and the planning commission with regard to issues I have sustained negative impacts upon my property. And so I am here tonight to basically state, in the comprehensive plan, in association with attached and detached accessory and accessory dwelling units, cottage houses, and single-family residence constructions within older neighborhoods that create certain negative impacts upon the livability of directly adjoining a nearby properties, that I request your legislation of planning codes. There are no planning codes that protect directly adjoining lots to certain negative impacts, and this is what these photos are about. I'm going to need more time, since I don't have my PowerPoint here.
Lynn, I'm going to tell you that I'm going to have to keep you to your three minutes because we have to keep the same for everybody. This is about fairness.
Okay, we're wasting my time here. Thank you kindly. I'm not trying to be rude. I only have so much time.
No, just.
So here are the photos. I've got a four-page letter I will go ahead and distribute to you. I've got a draft that I sent to the, that I talked to people representatives directly in a meeting I set up about pre-conditional use permit application processes, which are really faulty for making changes in it, alerting the public, but changes upon process. This is another area, but I'm giving you that document, and I only have one copy. It's expensive for me to copy. I want you to take a look at that. I've not received anything about it. So anyway, my point here, though, is that there is a loss of solar based on ways that these buildings are placed and impacting adjacent properties, based on shallow siting and setback, oversized bulk and scale with regard to adjacent lots, infringement upon personal privacies, the extensive nighttime light pollution that we're now suffering from, and exiting dryer exhaust. I know it sounds silly, but we have dryer exhaust now going in front of our windows from other people's exhaust. So anyway, and now what's happened, see, this particular brown building is what's been built. I now have a second garage that's being attached to, this is the new residence. The old residence was downsized to conform, finally. They didn't want to do it, but they finally did it. And now they're going to be building a two, a one-room, two, sorry, a one-room, 22-foot-high garage in the area that they were required to reduce. And now I've not only lost all of my light on the southern and southwest side of my house, I'm losing it on the western side. I am furious, and I have reason to be. I'm sorry, this is not personal, but we need codes that help protect us. If you're going to do infill, and you're going to be fair about it, please consider this. I need legislation. Other people do, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Yoshi Revell.
Thank you, members of the audience and staff, members of the city council, and Madam Mayor. Sometimes we get stuck in the fear in our head, and we make really terrible decisions. And we need to remember our hearts and our ability to do kindness. And I've read this before in here, but I don't know, sometimes it seems like it's worth reading again. It's a song called Imagine. Everybody, or most everybody knows this by John Lennon, but most people don't understand that he could not have written it without Yoko Ono's help. And it basically is talking about our heart voice and the ability that we have to do wonderful things if we allow ourselves. Imagine. Imagine there's no heaven. It's easy if we try. No hell below us, above us only sky. Imagine all the people living for today. Imagine there's no countries. It isn't hard to do. Nothing to kill or die for, and no more hatred, too. Imagine all the people living life in peace. Now, some may say I'm a dreamer, but I'm not the only one. I hope someday you'll join us, and the world will be as one. Imagine no possessions. I wonder if we can. No need for greed or hunger, a sisterhood of man. Imagine all the people sharing all the world. Now, some may say I'm a dreamer, but I'm not the only one. I hope someday you'll join us, and the world will be as one. Thank you, and I wish you all great health.
Thank you, Yoshi. John Survey. And that is the last name I have on the list, but if there's anybody who wishes to speak at public comment, please just come line here and just state your name.
I don't need that unless you want to see my notes. I'm John Survey, and I live at 1609 Mill on the South Side. I come here today, this evening, to you, to speak and request something for the heron colony that we know is down on the South Side near the treatment plant. We have, Greenways is a program that we have that's an opportunistic program. That is to say, we funded it through our tax dollars in order to sometimes take advantage of an opportunity that comes along that we feel benefits our entire community. We all enjoy the great blue herons that fly around our shoreline, our waterfront, our streams, our swamps, our marshes, near where we hike on trails that we have provided by our, through our Greenways programs. The home of these great blue herons is down on the South Side, and it's nebulous. It's touchy. They were driven there in 2000 from another place by development. There's a big colony down by March Point in Anacortes. There used to be one in Point Roberts, but they developed a golf course and they moved up to Canada. There's a lot of jokes between Towson and Point Roberts folks about that. We have the heron colony down there, and most people that I've talked to over the past eight or nine months that I've been looking into this, think that the city council protected that herring area about 10 or 12 years ago, in 2003 or 2005. The city was paying, and still is paying, each year, Anne Isinger, who is a renowned ornithologist and biologist who does studies, to study and monitor those herons and that colony each year for 16 years now. Something fell through the cracks. I'm not here to make any criticism. Something fell through the cracks back then, and it wasn't completed. The study was ready, the proposal was ready, and it didn't happen. The folks who own that land have sat on it and have decided a year ago to develop it into lots. They have every right to. They have done the plating, they're going through the permit process, and at some point, I was able to start talking to them. They're well-known, respected, prominent residents of the Bellingham community. They are willing to sell a sufficient protection for a 200-foot buffer to the city for a fee. We, as a community, if we value, oh my gosh, 40 seconds, if we value, we, as a community, should not expect a private property owner to bear that burden. We should. Greenways Committee, Advisory Committee, a week and a half ago, voted funds to purchase this property. We have funds in the Greenways, but it's going to take council action, 23 seconds. Council action, you folks, to act on this. The window will close in a few weeks, and they'll have every right to develop their property. We should not hold it against them. We have an opportunity to really give them maximum protection, and Isinger strongly recommends this. Seven seconds. That's, I probably have more notes, but if you could please give it a consideration, I'll be writing about it on Northwest Citizen to give more details, and I'm happy to talk to anybody about it in detail. to anybody about it in detail. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, council members. For the record, Bill Guyer, 1008 16th Street. You know, I envy your, your task. I mean, I guess I empathize as well. The next six, seven months, as you go through the competency plan, it'll be very detailed processes, Gene and Terry can attest to last time you did it, and I applaud you for doing that. And we know that the current comp plan has an average residential density, somewhere about six units per acre, which is a wise goal because we're discovering in the development community, you need at least four units per acre and greater to be able to meet the rising land costs, infrastructure costs, and fees that are associated with producing new housing. So I think there's some things that we need to be aware of, particularly of late, when we find that the households in Bellingham are paying close to 44% of their income towards housing, and the recent report said we're probably the highest in the state. So there's some things I would encourage you in a, in a broader policy level to look at. We still have some relics in our comp plan and zoning from actually the 1969 zoning code, particularly the 20,000-square-foot lots that we have in about 12 different areas in the city. It's a large landmass of underutilized and vacant property that can go to great measure towards meeting your and our community's infill goal. And I'd amend, I would suggest that those areas need to change from that two-units-per-acre current density to at least four units per acre. The other thing is that housing forms, we've heard some tonight, I know you have talked about it, and that is the single-family detached housing form is an antiquated housing form, and there are many others across the nation that are very successful. Townhouses, garden courts, other attached units, and we need to have greater flexibility. You can lead that effort, and at the same time, you can change the conflicting regulations we have, where over the past 30 years, approximately, the subdivisions being built have only achieved close to 75 to 80% of the density that actually could occur in those locations by the zoning that you have adopted. And it's those, attachment, those regulations that prevents meeting the density. I would like you to take a look at a policy that the density that you've identified to an area becomes a density by right, that is, the number that'll be there. You've already made that decision, and therefore the, the underlying particular regulations would not prevent that density from being met. But having said that, keeping the, the important resource protection components that we have for those areas around the city that are important to us, the steep slopes, streams, wetlands, et cetera. So I'd like then to leave you with these five metrics, if you could ask yourself as you go through this over the next seven months or so, and that is, when you vote, will you increase housing opportunities? Will you increase infill opportunities? Will you permit 21st-century forms of housing of all types? And instead of protecting few neighborhoods with 50-year-old zoning of half-acre lots, will you create equitable zoning across the city for all neighborhoods? And finally, will your vote improve housing affordability? So thank you, and I encourage you in your effort.
Thank you, Bill. Louise, did you wanna say something? Okay, and if there's anyone else who wants to come down for public comment, please come.
Thank you for offering this opportunity for people to speak. I'm Louise Bjornson. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood, as you know. And when I was on the city council, I voted for, for the ADU ordinance after much public input. We voted for attached ADUs. They're more environmentally sound with shared walls. They preserve green space, garden space, play area, and we have more sunny areas. We voted against detached ADUs in single-family neighborhoods again and again and again. They are not as environmentally sound with no shared walls. They have less play area, less garden area, less sun, more shade, and unusable space, and more impact to the neighbors. Once that soil is paved over, it is gone forever. Can you imagine the shock if you come home one day and have a big wall of a detached ADU next to your backyard? Whoops, someone changed the rules on you when you weren't looking. You have all of a sudden lost your privacy in that nice sunny backyard. Especially on narrow lots, the impact is huge. It's not what you expected to happen when you put your life savings in a house in a single-family neighborhood. You expected only one house on a lot. That's what the zoning said. Adding even a few detached ADUs changes the character of the neighborhood, especially if you happen to be the unlucky person with one built next to you. However, some neighborhoods have covenants to protect the people from that kind of impact, so it would not only happen in the older unprotected neighborhoods. When this was first proposed, it was to be only in new neighborhoods, so that when people bought into those areas, they would know what to expect. That is a much more fair process with predictability. Birchwood neighborhood is the lowest-income neighborhood in the city. 67 of the, 67% of the children qualify for free and reduced lunches at the Birchwood Elementary School. It is near Cordada, which is 62%, and now Alderwood Elementary School has 100% of the children qualifying for free and reduced lunches. Birchwood has over 5,000 people, but without our share of parks and open space. We have lots of apartments and West Maplewood. And now we lost our grocery store. Birchwood is the historic Victory Garden neighborhood laid out with long lots that historically provided food during tough times. It has some of the best soil in the city, is a very important resource. People are discovering, rediscovering those garden areas again. Areas with good garden space need to be preserved for the future, and also for now, especially since we lost our grocery store. I request that on page 33, and the pages might be a little bit different since the planning commission had it, replace the word existing with the word new, because detached ADUs were originally proposed for only new neighborhoods, a much more fair and predictable process. On page 34, policy H7, I'm just about through, take out the words detached ADUs in single-family neighborhoods. Page 35, H15, should be eliminated. People don't know what it means. The chat report is a long time ago. Page 29, population forecast, do not necessitate a zone, so why push for detached ADUs? We have worked hard to design urban villages in downtown with understanding that the density would go there in multifamily zones. Our older neighborhoods have value. Please treat them as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
I have information for you to pass out.
Come on forward, Dick. We gotta keep moving on, so. Go ahead.
Michael? Yeah, overhead. Yeah.
My name is Dick Conneboy. I live in the Samish neighborhood on South 46th Street. There was talk earlier about density and affordability, and this, this house here is on Craigslist right now for rent, about $30,000 a year. Kind of speaks to affordability, but it also speaks to density because I found this after about three minutes on looking through Craigslist, and then I went into the Watcom County property records. This is listed as a two-bedroom home, built in 1976, 858 square feet upstairs, two bedrooms, two baths. That's the way it's listed. It has an unfinished basement with a partition. It's on Craigslist as a six-bedroom, two-bath home, four bedrooms upstairs with a kitchen, bath, and dining room, all in 800 and some odd square feet. Two bedrooms in the basement with a full bath. Two-car carport, which you see there, and room for four other cars. And this is marketed to WWU students. And when we say we want to have, before we look at an ADU ordinance or changing any zoning or saying that we've got to infill certain neighborhoods, that we want to have an idea of what the true density of a, an area is, such as York neighborhood, which is over 50% rentals, and we have hidden density in homes like this, and we know that happens in all the neighborhoods. It happened in mine, 100, uh, a, a street with 12 homes, four of which were rentals, six or seven people in every single home. And I can assure you that that isn't the density now because none of those rentals remain. So if we do not know how much we have in the way of density in the neighborhoods, how are we going to decide whether or not we need ADUs in that neighborhood, whether we need to put in other type, type housing stocks, such as cottage housing, duplexes, triplexes, and, and the, and that sort of stuff? Lastly, affordability. They can charge $30,000 a year for this home because they'll have six people in there, or even maybe more, each paying a few hundred dollars each. But a family trying to move into that home isn't going to make it. If you got enough to pay $30,000 a year in rent, you got enough to buy the place, and therein lies the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Okay, and with that, we are going to close public hearing for this evening. And we're gonna move on to the review of this morning's committee meetings. We're gonna start with Public Works, Public Safety, and Terry Bornham is the chair.
Thank you. We had five items before the committee this morning. The first was an information-only item. It was a, on the computer-aided dispatch project, CAD. The CAD is one of the primary tools used in dispatching calls to countywide fire and law enforcement agencies. The current system used by Watcom was installed in 1992 and can no longer meet criminal justice information service requirements. A committee was formed in 2009 to research the project, an RFP was conducted, and the vendor has been chosen, versa term, was determined to be the best solutions for both fire and law enforcement. The CAD system will cost approximately $2.6 million. Watcom is budgeted for this purchase through setting aside 911 tax revenues and a reserve fund. The project will be paid for from reserves. The CAD implementations will occur during the 2016 and early 2017. GO Live is projected to occur in March of 2017. As was mentioned, this was, you know, the committee was set up in 2009 to start researching this, and there has been discussion from all the, the different parties on this for a long time. We finally reached that decision a couple weeks ago, and, yeah. It was well, there was a lot of questions asked, a lot of research done, but this is critically important that we, for the systems to come up with something that works for fire, dispatch, and police dispatch. And so this was information only. The next item was to authorize the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Bellingham and Port of Bellingham regarding preparatory work for Granary Avenue. The Georgia Pacific West Cleanup Project will be completed during the summer of 2016 and be administered by the Port of Bellingham. Including in the scope of work will be the city-directed preparatory earthwork for Granary Avenue that will be paid for with city funds. The scope and agreement are defined in the attached interlocal agreement. The city's cost to this is estimated at $27,023. This, the committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Council members, any discussion, questions? Okay. Motion in front of us, do authorize the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city and Port regarding preparatory work for the Granary Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
The next item was a solid waste disposal final RFP. Through a series of agreements, lawsuits, and settlements dating back to the 1980s, the city designated Republican, Republic Services, aka RECOMP, as the destination for all residential solid waste collected by Sanitation Service Company, SSC. The disposal agreement expired on April 30th, 2016. The draft request for proposal has been finalized based on input and comments. Council requested that the final RFP be presented to the Public Works Committee prior to being issued. Today's session was for inform, yeah, today was, was for information only.
On Bill McDonald?
No.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, solid waste. Did we? What did we do, Ted? You were here.
Okay, maybe we did.
Oh, that was, you were right.
It says information only, but I was thinking, yeah, I had, okay. Yeah, but it was for information only, yeah. We were trying to be efficient. We were making sure all bases were covered, i's were dotted, t's crossed. Yeah. It's an efficient commission, uh, committee. The next item was a work session regarding the Transportation Benefit District, the TBD, funding allocations in the 2017 through, 2017 through 2022, the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, TIP. Since the creation of the Transportation Benefit District in 2010, funding has been allocated between three priorities on the city's Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Okay, yeah, TIP, one, arterial resurfacing, two, non-motorized projects, and three, transit enhancement. The contract with Watcom Transit Authority, the WTA, for enhanced transit services is expiring at the end of 2016. Staff will present on potential, or did present on potential TBD projects, funding allocations in advance of the Six-Year TIP. Public hearing scheduled on June 6th, 2016. And we discussed, today was information only, but we discussed the idea of staff's recommendation of switching over to just two silos with this for resurfacing and for non-motorized transportation. There was a lot of good discussion around it, specifically about how we ensure that projects that come, that may come forward in the future from WTA that will benefit the, the system within Bellingham can possibly be funded if we go with just the, the two silos of funding. But we'll have that public hearing, and then we'll have to make those decisions.
Terry, we, we actually missed the bid award for Bill McDonald Parkway, so we'll have to go back.
Oh, okay. Yep. Thank you. Let me see. Yeah, 41. Okay, sorry about that. But, so the fifth item, it would've been the fourth in the packet, was a bid award for ES-0532 2016 overlay of Bill McDonald Parkway's project. The 2016 overlay Bill McDonald Parkway project consists of the overlay of Bill McDonald from College Way to 21st Street. Improvements include the upgrading bus pullouts and repairing failed road sections. Bids were opened on 2015, or on May 5th, 2016 at 11:00 a.m. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was $483,193.30, inclusive of any Washington State sales or use tax on applicable schedules by Colacocchio Brothers Construction, Inc. of Blaine, Washington. The engineer's estimate was $486,985.93. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Council members, discussion, comments, questions? Okay, so, motion in front, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just one, one thing relating to this. As we mentioned with this, this is for overlay, but it also covers the bus pullouts, and that relates to the other item. If we go to just the two silos, we will still be doing projects that benefit WTA, so just wanted to mention that.
All right. Any discussion? No? Okay, so, motion in front of us is for a bid award for the overlay for the Bill McDonald Parkway. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
End of committee reports. I hope I didn't miss anything.
Thank you, Teri. Our next committee was Parks and Recreation, and Michael Liloquist is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. We had one item before us. It was a resolution that would authorize the city to apply for and then enter into an agreement for a Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program grant for assisting with the acquisition of land for a community park in the Cordotta neighborhood. The city recently purchased 20 acres on Cordotta Parkway for a new park at a total cost of $3,614,418, utilizing Greenway III Leving funds. By completing what was known as a wave of retroactivity at the time of the purchase, the Parks Department reserved the opportunity to apply for a grant for partial reimbursement of the expense through a competitive grant from the State of Washington Recreation Wildlife Program. So this now, then, is taking opportunity to apply for that grant. The attached resolution would authorize the city to apply for the grant, and then for the mayor to enter into an agreement to receive these funds in the event they are awarded. As I said, the total purchase price was just around $3.6 million. We could receive up to $829,000 that would be reimbursed to the city for the land repurchase, and then make money available to go back into other programs if we do receive the grant. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended that we pass this resolution, and I so move.
Second.
Council members, discussion, comments? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
End of committee.
Okay. Onto committee of the whole. We had five items in front of us today. Our first one was a discussion of jail options. So I'm not going to go through everything that was presented to us today, but I want to encourage anybody to take a look at the packet online, and you'll see all the history of all the jail documents and things that have gone back and forth for the last year and a half on the jail proposal. Some things that are new, there is a really great matrix in our packet that outlines all the different options that we could take and what direction they would bring us, including different tax structures as well. So this is outlined very well, and it's really easy to understand if anybody wants to take a look at that. But it was just an opportunity for us to document all the information that we have provided on the jail options, and to review kind of where the city is at and how we feel about the steps we want to take moving forward. This was for information-only, and we very much expect that this discussion will continue at length. The second item in front of us was the planning, and, sorry, was an update on our low-barrier shelter. So the city has been working for the last nine months with many entities to figure out how we can provide a low-barrier shelter, because we have a very large homeless community, and there is not appropriate locations for everyone to go. And this would be a shelter that could house all kinds of different populations and has an easy entry. So the four strategies that have been employed include partnering with the Lighthouse Mission to secure a property and operate the shelter, working with Northwest Youth Services to find temporary emergency shelter for 18- to 24-year-old homeless people, and reaching out to Peace Health to investigate the creation of additional respite beds for homeless persons, and facilitating outreach to the faith-based community. So this is where we are right now in our process to find a low-barrier shelter for the homeless community. And so this is, as we move forward and find opportunities, we'll be, we'll be sharing that with the community. So that's just an update that we are trying to move forward as soon as we can, and have as many entities supporting this, this, this low, I'm like, what's the best way to put this? I think everyone in the community is very supportive of us finding this shelter and is doing whatever they can to find opportunities. So thank you for the city and everyone who has been working on this particular challenge. Next was an overview of draft of the 2016 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. We got this really nice, big binder today that outlines, the planning commission has had 21 meetings, multiple public hearings, and our planning department has been working to kind of take a look at what's possible and also what the planning commission has recommended for our future, for our comprehensive plan. So we need to pass this plan by the end of August, I believe. Is that our date line? So just a couple, obviously, I'm not going to go over all the changes that were done today, but just a couple of things that I wanted to identify, and what page are they on? Okay. So a couple things that are really important in regards to how we're moving forward on our comprehensive plan is, next city council meeting, June 6, we will have a public hearing. And then there will be multiple meetings after that in regards to trying to figure out the best solutions for our city moving forward with our comprehensive plan. This is something that we are regulated, we have to do every eight years, and August 8 will be our last planning committee final work session. So if you are interested in the comprehensive plan, I encourage you all to look at the planning commission meetings and watch those videos, because they are very detailed in regards to how public comment influenced our decisions in regards to moving forward. Is there anything else that anyone wanted to add on that one? No? Okay. So, again, this is an important thing that we have to do, and we all are very vested in trying to make the best decisions we can for our community moving forward. Fourth item today was Sustainable Services Process Update. So this was laying out all of the things you may have heard, we are using the term LOS, our level of service, that we are about to hit a cliff in a couple years, and we have to be very cognizant of where we're spending our money to make sure that our programs are all viable, and we're focusing on the things that are most important. So our planning, our planning department put together a really great metrics for us, sorry, matrix for us, and it outlines all of the things that we're actually going to take a look at for our level of service. So if this is something you're interested in, you're wondering where the city wants to, what the, what the concerns are, what we're looking at, et cetera, this matrix is laid out for us in our packet. It is online for you to see, and there is also a timeline in regards to all of the things we're going to look at and in what, what matter of priority. So that is in our packet and very detailed, but really easy to understand, which I really appreciate, because it's easy to, easy to find exactly what I'm looking for, and think we all want that. Anybody else want to add anything on the level of service discussion? No? Okay. And our last item today was a future parks funding discussion, where we were talking about, briefly about the Metropolitan Parks District, and also about Greenways IV levy model. And it was realized that the packet may not have, may not have supported the request that we had originally, and that, so we're going to revisit that again. There was a motion this afternoon, and that motion was from Dan Hamel, moved to recommend having a staff bring back a resolution with the changes contained in the amended version from this afternoon, and to have the Greenways IV placed on the November ballot with legal review. So I am, that is our motion in front of us, and I so move. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay.
All discussed, though.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. And we are going to move to our minutes. We have one set of minutes in front of us today. This is the evening minutes from May 2.
Move approval.
Second.
She's hard to beat anymore.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. And older new business. Does anyone have anything they wanted to discuss?
Should I make my motion again? I don't need to, do I?
No.
Okay. Did you want to repeat it at all?
Oh, sure, I'll just repeat it. Just to report that this afternoon, I made a motion to direct staff to schedule a public hearing on June 20, and to issue the appropriate notice for consideration of a resolution in support of Initiative 1433, and that initiative is hoping to get a higher minimum wage and paid in a safe sick leave on the Washington state ballot.
Thank you, Roxanne. Anyone else? No? Okay. So I was remiss in mentioning something this afternoon in older new business, is that I wanted to thank all of the, the city staff. In our retreat, one of the things we talked about is that sometimes our packets, the timeliness that they come out in, we don't always have all the information in front of us, and we asked for summaries to be put in the packet when the information is not there, and just wanted to say kudos, because we, that really has improved, and now it is, it feels a lot better to have some information in front of us. So thank you for that. I should have probably said that when there was more staff this afternoon, but I don't want to forget again, so thank you for that. And then, our executive session report, we did have an executive session today. The first one, we had three items in front of us, potential property acquisition, staff provided information on a potential property acquisition, the action to entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of 7.6 acres in the Lake Wacom watershed for Mark and Joan Van Gacyk for $174,240, with anticipated closing date of June 1, 2016.
I'm of approval. Oh, you already moved it. Second, I'm sorry.
Moving right along. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Second item in front of us today was potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. Council and staff discussed direction being taken by staff, and no action was taken. Third item, potential real property lease. Staff provided information on a potential real property lease. Council and staff discussed direction being taken by staff, and no action was taken. And that includes our executive session, and from there, we are going to move to the mayor's report.
Thank you, President Vargas. I have one approval and two informations to give you. The first approval was mayor's appointment of Marissa McGrath to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
Second, two are just advisory, mayor's appointment of Nina Carhinan to the Bellingham Sister Cities Advisory Board, and mayor's appointment of Alexis Blue to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. End of mayor's report.
Whoa, we are moving. Yeah. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, motion seven-zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21225, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget, adjusting the salary grade for the Aquatics Center main cashier classification as a result of a job audit and reallocation expenditures in the Park Department Aquatics Group to provide for the additional cost.
Second.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Chink Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Liloquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Teri Bornammon?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven-zero.
Okay, well, thanks, everyone, for joining us. Our next city council meeting will be June 6, 2016. Enjoy your evening. We are adjourned.